All right, we're on.
We're on.
We have to have six.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Out of eight? Are you sure?
Mike says fireworks. We think six would work.
Yeah.
It used to be six.
Out of nine, probably out of nine. Because nine, you can't, five doesn't. Did you have nine members? Yeah.
When do we have now?
Well, you have nine seats, but you have eight members right now, so you take it out of the members.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be okay?
Yeah. Yes, I know the bay is working. We need to, audio is on. All right, we're gonna get, we'll get started.
Good evening and welcome to the February 11, 2025 City of Kankakee Planning Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call. Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Rorham.
Here.
Barry McCracken. Arthur Lacks. Susan Lopez.
Here.
Jose Arturo Barajas. Steve Case.
Here.
Beverly Hood. Present. We have a quorum. Approval of minutes for January 14, 2025. Are there any corrections, changes, or comments? Hearing none, we will go ahead and file them. Communications.
Staff is still working on the Prairie Walk Development Agreement. We are also still waiting on a submission on QuickTrip, which I know is forthcoming. We also, just to give you all an update, we ran into just a tiny issue with the final ordinance on the conditional use permit for QuickTrip that we found through the surveyor when we were working on the final document. One of the lots was left out of the legal description in it, so like the most northwest lot. So we just went through a, like a restated and amended and restated ordinance to correct that just recently, but just, I wanted to put it on here so you knew that that went through. And then the rezoning on Cottage was approved at the February 3 City Council as well.
That's all I have. Are those City Council actions?
Yes.
New business. Case PB 2025-2-1. A public hearing for a conditional use permit for a domestic violence shelter care facility at 2391 East Court Street, Kankakee, Illinois 60901. Will the applicant please come forward for this case? Hello.
Hi.
If you raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Jenny Shane Wetter.
Thank you. Jenny, if you could tell us about your case?
Yes. So I am here representing Harbor House. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Executive Officer. We are requesting a conditional use permit at our current location, so that's 2391 East Court, for our domestic violence care facility that includes non-residential and residential services, so not looking to change locations or anything like that. So some of you remember me, I was here in June. We did a public hearing with the ECDA regarding an application from the City of Kankakee on behalf of Harbor House to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So the hearing was regarding grant funding for $2 million for construction of a new program facility housing the expanded emergency shelter. A part of that application of what was submitted to DCEO was our current zoning documentation, which was from the early 1980s. That was for a special use permit to provide a temporary shelter care facility. So upon the city receiving initial communications about the award, there were some items that the grant monitor said we would need to care for, and updating that zoning was one of those items that we needed to address. So here I am to request the conditional use permit, so this is updating the zoning reflecting the additional office space for non-residential and residential services as well as additional shelter space. So we've served our community for more than 45 years. We've been at this location since the night, early 1980s, and we're so grateful for all of your support throughout the grant process. Very excited at these initial notifications in regards to the grant, but we now gotta jump through these hoops and cross off these boxes. So thank you so much for continued support of our mission of empowering individuals, families, and communities through domestic violence programs, advocacy, and prevention at our location. I'm happy to answer any questions, or Melissa, if I missed any key details, please jump in.
Any questions? Comments?
Chip Rorham. Question on the phasing. Are we moving on both phases at this point?
We are, we're not. So you mean the phased?
Phase one and phase two. I mean, phase one is?
The future plan.
Shelter, and phase two is the administrative?
No, so what Harbor House has done is they, they have that future plan in place just to analyze the parking needs.
Mm-hmm.
I, I did speak with Mike and Barbie as well about this. I know that there were, there are plans for future expansion, but the way that our zoning works, they would need to come back for an amendment anyways. We don't have plans for those buildings that are in the middle, what they look like, and we would need to review that when it comes forward at that time.
Okay.
But they wanted to make sure that those were taken into account in their parking calculations, because out of scope, they, you know, economy is a scale, they want to make sure that they can build that parking lot to what their needs will be in the future and not have to do that twice, do the construction twice.
Thank you.
This is Steve Case. Jenny, just, so I didn't, I wasn't here for your original presentation. Can you just help me understand the, the grant? Has the grant been awarded, or it's sort of going to be awarded, but it's contingent on a couple extra details? How does this fit into the overall grant award process?
So the grant was from, it was only eligible to certain communities within the state of Illinois, so it was CDBG funds, those focused communities, a part of COVID funds. So their, the expiration or the spending timeframe for the grant is from January 1, 2025, to December 31, 2026. So the City of Kankakee is the applicant.
Okay.
And they received notice, I want to say late November of the, there's no signed agreements or anything like that, they had a list of things, and we knew that upon receiving notice we would have to begin the environmentals process. There was been quite a delay in communication, is maybe the nicest way I can say that, with the state in regards to getting some clarity. So the environmentals and all the process is due then by the end of March. There were some items on our side, for example, this zoning. When we submitted our zoning materials at that point, it called us a temporary shelter facility. We're pretty permanent at this point, so updating a lot of that language, that was one of the required items then, that is contingent to receive that $2 million in federal funds. I will say the one unfortunate thing is the end date, December 31, 2026, doesn't get pushed back. So that's where we're trying to move as quickly as we could and make sure that we're also being prudent and accurate, so we're not having to redo work.
Thank you.
Great question.
Any other questions? Any communication from anyone?
We had one public comment, it was in the staff report, from someone who came in the office asking, they own the property to the east of here, not the, there's like a sliver of land that has Babcock Street on it, it's the property to the east of that, and he had concerns that they might be trying to access their property through that street, you know, and it's a private drive with like a bunch of houses that access it, and so he was concerned about the, the traffic impact. But when I told him that the site plan did not access that property and they were only going through their ingress, egress onto the frontage road, he had no further questions, and I have not heard from anyone else.
So this is basically just administrative to make sure that they have their CUP so that they can pursue this?
Well, the way that our codes work and zoning in general, is if you have an expansion, you can get granted a conditional use and a special use for a project or however, let's just pretend like it's a used car lot, but let's say they only build the used car lot on a portion of the property, and then they decide to come in and expand that in five years, we would want them to come back in front of the planning board to review that and amend that conditional use, to add on the additional 20-car parking or whatever, because there's additional implications. It doesn't just give you free rein to continue to expand to your heart's content, if you will. And so that's just typical, how zoning works anyways, but that would be how our processes work at the city. And so this would have triggered, I know Jenny mentioned that this was part of what the federal government wanted from them, but this is what the city required anyway. And then the ordinance from 1984 or '6?
Three years, yeah, one of those years.
It did mention that it was temporary, it had limited capacity, it had, there was a lot of things about it that really just needed to be kind of rewritten and put into our modern-day language.
Does that answer your question, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there are no other questions at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. If you raise your right hand, please, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Stephanie Brown.
All right, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. I just wanted to say a few words about Harbor House and just how important they are to our community, to our county. I've lived in this area for about 17 years, I'm originally from Indiana, but we moved here and we stayed, and so I will say that since I've become a resident here a few years ago, and I've started working here for about three years, I've seen nothing but positive change because of Harbor House and the work that is done specifically with the youth in the community. I think the next step in this process is as fast as it gets approved, that brings us closer to having a safe future of, for our county, for our community. I think it's always so important for the education that this provides, that Harbor House provides, and the work that's done. Domestic violence is a public health issue, and it's something that was prevalent in our community, and I think it will be really important for this to get approved, so that's all I had to say, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, or action? Are you ready to act?
I am.
Okay.
Deb Terrell. Regarding case PB 2025-2-1, the request for a conditional use permit for a domestic violence shelter care facility at 2391 East Court Street, I would like to move that we recommend this for approval, and I would like to attach the standards used to evaluate conditional uses as outlined, A through F, on our paperwork, and also to attach the recommendations that prior to commencement of the business operation, all improvements will be submitted to the city for review and issuance of site plan approval, building permits by the Building, Fire, Planning, and Engineering Departments, and in addition, all of the Kankakee County Health Department requirements be satisfied, that they provide access for emergency vehicles, which shall be approved by the Fire Department during the site plan approval process, provide increased variety of understory planting in a buffer strip, and provide additional native shrub species in lieu of boxwood. Okay, that's very specific. And provide additional plant material at the two entrance islands to meet the perimeter landscape strip requirements of shade trees and shrubs, but not to block visibility, and that all dumpsters must be screened.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Rorham?
Yes.
Barry McC, oh. Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes. The conditional use is recommended for approval. This will be on the March 3 City Council for final determination by the City Council.
Congratulations. Next case, PB 2025-2-2. A public hearing for a MAP amendment to rezone 178 to 272 South Entrance Avenue, even addresses only, 225 and 227 South Entrance Avenue, 157, 159, 238, 240, and 241 West Hickory Street, 236 to 254 West Merchant Street, even in odd addresses, 233 and 243 West Station Street, 215 to 265 South Washington Avenue, odd addresses only, 341 and 342 South Washington Avenue, and 350 to 390 South Washington Avenue from commercial to residential zoning.
Thank you. So this zoning case, like many that we have done, is a recommended rezoning for properties that are currently residential land uses but zoned commercial. This was brought to our attention, there's a rehab project in one of the homes on East Washington Avenue that's currently seeking a grant in our ECDA office, and they have more of a policy check in their office to make sure the zoning matches and the departments have signed off, and so they, they requested that I look at this area, and of course, we noticed that there's multiple blocks of residential zoned commercial. I have typically been going to check, TESCA did an analysis a while back, it was in 2021, where they looked at these inconsistencies across the city and made recommendations on areas that could be rezoned. These two blocks were in that recommendation with no specific zoning really, but just the recommendation to the residential. And then, so that's why we're here. I did receive quite a bit of public comment on this case, but I think mostly because people were, I think there was some concern, there was one person in particular that was concerned about, they thought we were zoning it to commercial, and they were just wanting to make sure that those land uses, they had some, a bunch of investment properties, they wanted to make sure that they were matched up as closely as they could be to the zoning district that was being recommended. I also had the owner at 159 West Hickory, she called and she was, pardon me, very convinced that she had already been through a rezoning for her property, and she thought over five years ago, maybe. And I did search the records, all of our clerk's records, even the last 40 years, probably three or four times over again, just to make sure I didn't miss something. I could not find anything, but the reality is, is that this would overwrite that anyways, and what she wanted was for it to be residential. She also did note that her property is a single-family home, and she did de-convert and had to get meters removed, so I kind of wonder if that's maybe what she remembered and it wasn't really the zoning. So our records over in code did show that as a two unit, and so when I did the analysis originally, it did show R2 for her property, and that has changed. I'll show you the updated table I have here based on this public comment I received. And then somebody called from 215 South Washington, they also have a single-family home, R1T, they were supported, supportive of the R1T rezoning. I had somebody call from, that owned the property at 238 to 240 West Merchant Street. That owner indicated that they also went through a de-conversion five years ago, but they have not gone through a rezoning. They were okay with R1T, our records also showed that that was still R2, so we, I've also updated that one. There's also a property right next door to that, I'll show you in just a minute where that's located, that the city owns, it's currently on, what we think is on the demo list. Our attorney is still, we know that a demo order was issued for it, we're not sure if it was ever vacated, she has not been able to find that record, so she's pretty sure it's still on there. That property has also been under discussion at our BPC meetings right now, so I'm pretty sure it's likely that's going to be demoed. I would recommend that that zoning adjacent to that property is the same as the one to the, to the east of it. This homeowner at 238, 240, he has shown interest in acquiring that property through our vacant lot program, so I think it would be good if those lined up as the same zoning, those would both be R1T. And then I did get a call today from someone at 351 South Washington, she's actually in real estate, she's an investor, she had a lot of questions about changing from commercial zoning, because I think that people who are investors obviously have an interest to protect their residential, but there's also a concern about losing commercial zoning, which I know is something that I'd like, I'd love to hear what the planning board has to think about that tonight, and I think those are topics that we have to discuss, you know, when, I think that that's probably one of the reasons why this area is commercial, is probably back in the 70s trying to tee that up for potential redevelopment, but I think we have to compare that to trying to protect our existing housing and allowing it to be repaired and constructed. We have a lot, it's not like a lot of this is vacant in these two blocks, much of it is actually occupied right now, I would say the majority of it is occupied and being utilized and invested and repaired, and so I think that those are things that we have to just balance at this meeting and decide how we want to move forward with those. She did ultimately, I did walk her through kind of the pros and cons of all of it, and I also talked to her about the potential to like redevelop a single lot as commercial, which becomes very difficult. She has kind of a smaller lot, and so trying to fit parking on that and, it's almost impossible to try to think about converting a property like that to actual commercial and meeting all the codes, so I think collectively she still was supportive of the R2, but I just wanted to share that that conversation happened with her as well. So this is, you can see these, I've highlighted those properties up here that, let me see if I. Yeah, there's two. I don't know why I'm duplicating this, I thought I had to look at the shelf up here, but it's these three properties right here that changed, the 159, the 254 West Merchant, and the 238, 240. And then here you can see where those are. The person that called me is the property to the, the east, the smaller one, that's the 238, 240, they have a small, little, just framed, sited house there, and then there's a pretty large old historic home on the west side, but it's in significant disrepair. That's the one that's currently owned by the city and we think is on the demo list as well. And so both of those would be recommended for R1T versus the R2. And then here, and this, this one is the, 157 is the one that called, that she thought she had rezoned, but she, she lives in the house by herself and has de-converted that house to a single family, so we would also recommend the R1T here. The other thing that's different about this area, I think, is that sometimes we have an area like we just dealt with, with Cottage Avenue, where the entire block is all a single zoning district, which makes, I think, all of us feel a little bit more happy with our zoning map, but I think in this case, when we're trying to protect our residential housing, it's going to result in kind of a mixed pattern like this unless we end up with like a mixed use residential zoning district, which we don't have right now, or we apply, say, all R3 to the entire block, which you could also do, but I think opens us up to other concerns and questions as well. So I think those are other questions, that's another question I'd like to hear from the planning board and what their opinions are on that. I did include, just for reference, two areas. Mike Hoffman had recently done a rezoning down on South Washington that kind of shows where we have some scattered zoning districts as well that occurred after a rezoning recently here, and then also in this kind of South Dearborn area where we've done some of that as well. So I think it's good to just see that there's other patterns of mixed zoning districts in other areas of the city already. And then I just summarized our findings here, I always do this just so the public can read them if they want to. If you have any questions for me, that's all I have on this case right now.
Chip Rorham, I have a question on the opportunity to protect the residential and, you know, properties that are there, I think that it's solid to work towards getting residential zoning for, for the areas. My interest in the, that neighborhood in general, sometimes I can see in the future, not necessarily declared, but in the future, I could see particularly Washington Avenue want to go back to commercial?
Mm-hmm.
From residential, should, should there be someone who wanted to develop property along those lines, especially if there was an activity to protect the commercial zoning from the residential zoning through some green space planting?
Mm-hmm.
Various other things, that that could happen. So could you speak to how that process would work?
Well, I think that if, I think we would be handling it like any other development project that would come in, if somebody had acquired like a block or multiple blocks, I think there's a couple of different ways you could handle this. One would be if somebody was going out and doing private acquisition to conglomerate something and came to the city looking to do a development project, and then I think in that case, we could look, you could look to our comprehensive plan, which is kind of old, but I think we could also look to the land use patterns. Obviously, much of Washington is commercial, and I think that what makes this difficult, this MAP amendment, is that you could argue this in both directions. I think it's very easy to see how Washington could become all commercial, but I think that they tried to do that back in the 70s and 80s, obviously, and it never, those houses in this area never went away. And so I think that you could have someone preemptively doing it on their own, the city could also try to initiate, but then I think that we would need to take steps to aggressively try to go in and acquire property or work with landowners to try to figure and acquire property or work with landowners to try to figure out how to get a hold of more property, Chip. Because I think without having control of those properties, you can't actually do that redevelopment.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are you suggesting 157 West Hickory to R1T?
Yes.
And 238 to 240 West Merchant, R1T to R2?
Yes.
And there was another one you mentioned.
Let me see. 215...and I apologize. I feel like I may have...let's...can we look at the table in the staff report? Because I feel like I duplicated this one instead of having a second page. So we can just go through it in a packet based on the public comments. So 215 South Washington is already R1T. So they actually were just supportive of that recommendation. And then 159 West Hickory?
R1T.
157 to 159 West Hickory. That one would change to R1T. And then 238 to 240 West Merchant would go to R1T. And then the property that's next to it?
Well, I thought that would go from R1T to R2.
254 West Merchant's the one the city owns?
No, 238 to 240 West Merchant.
To R1T. So they...they're the ones that de-converted. And they would like to acquire the property from the city. They live there by themselves as a single-family home. So they would like R1T zoning. And the one the city owns is 254 West Merchant right next door. And the other one, the public comment, was 351 South Washington, which I think we had her as R2 because she does have a two-unit in there. Yeah. Those were the only ones, those three.
Any questions? It says we're mulling this over still. I'll go ahead and open up a public hearing in case there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case or has any questions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, so how do you want us to proceed in terms of the recommendations on these three different properties? You want those separate or all together?
Just the three properties, you mean? Or do you mean for the whole thing?
The whole thing.
So normally, we do it on the whole thing. But I think that we need to make...when you make the motion, I think we should...since this was presented in the staff report one way and we are making some changes to that, I'd like on the record that those three properties are being changed to the R1T.
And which three properties are...
So it's on the table there...do you want...maybe we should do the PIN, just to make sure.
Okay.
The PIN. And that one's going to be R1T.
Start over, please.
That one's R1T. And that one is R1T.
What was the PIN of the first one?
157 West Hickory. 157...it used to be 157 to 159. She's all the way on the east side.
157 West Hickory?
Yeah, up here, Chip. You can see it's circled in blue.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. And now I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
So you could motion, you know, for the map amendment and with the following changes.
Number.
Okay.
And then list those three PINs with their zoning districts, I think. Did we have any public comment? I'm sorry. We didn't have any public comment?
No.
Okay.
Did we close it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us at all? If you want to speak to the planning board, you'll have to come to the microphone.
Oh, he...yeah. Yes, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Evan Sipple.
All right, Mr. Sipple.
The property that I own is on the corner of Washington and Hickory. 388, 390 South Washington Avenue. It's a two-unit apartment. There's multiple owners in it. I'm managing the property. I need to get with the other partners to see what direction they would like to go. I didn't know if there was a time limit on this decision-making or I need to make it tonight to go residential. It's commercial right now. And I believe they want to make it residential, R1 or R2. I don't know the difference or anything. I just didn't know if there was a deadline on making a decision on that.
We're making recommendations tonight.
Recommendations. So after tonight, it's off the table.
It goes to City Council.
So you would have until...we'll have this case...if the planning board acts tonight, you would still have...we would present this to the City Council on March 3rd. So you could ask...you could bring any concerns you have to staff, to myself, if you wanted to, if you had time.
Are you going to say?
Yes. Between now and March 3rd, you could bring those concerns to me. And we could always bring those concerns to council and recommend that your property be taken off of that recommendation if you wanted to change it.
Does that fit your schedule? Would you fit that in?
Oh, yeah. I'll make it...I'll get with the...
Okay. Do you have my information from the letter?
I got that sort of letter.
Yes. Yeah, just get ahold of me if you need...if you want to... If you have a different opinion than what passes tonight, okay? Thank you.
Commissioners, are you ready to act?
Can you also sign in in the back for me? Oh, you did, okay. Thank you.
Do we have anyone who want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready. Chip Warham. Regarding case PB 2025-2-1 for a map amendment to rezone 178 to 272 South Entrance Avenue, even addresses only. 225 and 227 South Entrance Avenue. 157, 159, 238, 240, and 241 West Hickory Street. 236 to 254 West Merchant Street, even in odd addresses. 233 and 243 West Station Street. 215 to 265 South Washington Avenue, odd addresses only. 341 and 342 South Washington Avenue. And 350 to 390 South Washington Avenue from commercial to residential zoning. With the one stipulation that three parcels be specifically R1T, those parcels would be on the following addresses. 254 West Merchant Street. Next parcel would be 238 to 240 West Merchant Street. And 157 to 159 West Hickory Street to be R1T in the zone specifically. Also, would like to see the standards used to evaluate the map amendments be attached. Items A through E. And the staff recommendations as well to be attached as we recommend this to City Council.
All right, we have a motion by Chip Warham. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second, but could we add the PIN numbers for those three parcels?
Sure. The three parcels...I'll read them in the order that I said them. The PIN number for 254 West Merchant is 160932337001. For 238 West Merchant, it's 160933337002.
It's 16093233702, 002.
Yeah. And for the Hickory Street, 157 Hickory Street, Thank you.
And we have a second by Deb Tyrrell. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, we were talking about how this could go either way. And we need to decide what we're going to be requesting here. And I think we're obviously requesting that we lean toward residential. And I think that's probably very necessary because when you think about the timeframe of when these properties were included as commercial, the city was looking toward expansion of commercial space. But here we are, what, 50 years later? We're in a completely different space where the pressure is on providing homes. We need affordable housing for people in Kankakee. We're losing housing because there are so many that have been, you know, demolished, have an awful lot of empty lots. We have not been very aggressive about expansion with, you know, bringing in other places into the city. So we have to work with what we have. And what we have are houses that people should be investing in and could be investing in if they're properly zoned to do so. And as far as expansion of commercial space is considered, we have so much available commercial space now that's sitting empty. When you look around the city, there's a ton of empty commercial space. So...and nobody's lining up to fill it. So I think that this is a very necessary move on our part. And I would strongly recommend that City Council consider this as a move toward housing for the people who live here.
Roll call. Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Steve Case?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
The map amendment is recommended for approval and will be on the March 3rd City Council agenda.
Okay.
Is there any old business?
I do not have any old business.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Steve Case.
Second.
Who said second? Deb Tyrrell? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adjourned.